Meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board. I'm going to read our disclaimer regarding meeting. In accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the town's website at www.plymouth-nh.org. The first... Being that Rebecca's not with us tonight, I'll be chairing the meeting. Let's do a roll call. Carl?
Present.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Josh, have you been seated?
No.
Are you observing?
He's observing.
Oh, John, John, sorry.
Oh, hi there. I'm observing. Been talking to the select board and Rebecca, and there's a little bit of a confusion about how to proceed and who in charge of that, so I think I'm on hold for now.
Right. And the other member we have in attendance is Steve.
Here.
All right, and Steve, I will see you as a voting member for the meeting.
Okay.
As we normally do. Being that our first applicant is not here to represent Peppercorn Natural Foods, I would like to move up the minutes of 11:05. Would anyone care to make any amendments to the minutes of November 5? Would anyone care to motion one way or another how to handle the minutes of November 5?
I guess one clarification, Phil. It says in there that Ms. Sears may resign, I think is the way it's phrased. I thought it was pretty clear that she wanted to step down from the board, and that's why we thanked her.
I can...
It's the only thing I saw.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, at the time that they were drafted, Ms. Sears had not... We had not received a letter yet, and so I did not want to make assumptions. So I... That's why.
Have we since received?
She has, yes, she has since that time, so.
Steve, do you want to make an amendment to that since we have since received her letter of resignation, and that wasn't your indication? Or you're...
I think with Jules' explanation, it's fine with me, as long as it was accurate that night, so.
Are there any other comments or amendments to the minutes of November 5? Hearing none. Would anyone care to move to approve these?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 5 as written.
Thank you. Steve has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call. Carl?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Oh, thank you. Is that better? Okay. All right, so the minutes of November 5 are approved as written. Was Peppercorn... Was Mr. Cobert going to join us in person, or is he remote?
They emailed this today, and I said that they were free to zoom in, or either way. I made sure they had the link, so I'll just... If you want to... Are you going to go on?
I don't mind if they're not here. I certainly... Mr. Carter is here, and I certainly don't mind exercising my ability to move things on the agenda. And if Peppercorn isn't here, I would like to invite Mr. Carter to present to us. So, Mr. Carter, would you like to join us? How are you? Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't know if you want me to bore you and read my narrative, if you've already read it. Do you want me to read it again?
Since this is available to the public, would you mind reading it for us?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll be starting with the subdivision for tax map 21328 of lots 1 and 2, Tenny Mountain Highway, Plymouth, New Hampshire. Sheet 1 of the master plan, it's sort of the two lot subdivision, lot number 1 being Phase 2, has 491.9 feet of frontage on Tenny Mountain Highway, Route 25, and 400 feet along the top of the bank of the Baker River. The area to the top of the bank is 4.31 acres. Actual area to be detailed to the property, line which equals 5 acres more or less. Lot is also subject to a 50-foot wide private way and easement as shown in common with lot number 2. And I don't know if you have a plan. Do you want me to hold one up, or are you all set?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, can you share the electronic version?
And then I'll go on to lot number 2 after. That lot number 1 is the one on the left side of the sheet that I just described with the 50-foot right-of-way on the right side.
Thank you.
Do you want me to point it out, or?
I think she can do it.
Oh, okay, yeah. I read the frontage, and I read the frontage on the river. I didn't read the depth. It's about 800 feet deep. I know, 500 feet on that side. But I'll go into lot number 2. Lot number 2 has 231.19 feet of frontage on the Tenny Mountain Highway and 750 feet along the top of the bank of the Baker River. The area to the top of the bank equals 5.04 acres. Actual lot areas equal to 5.3 acres. Lot number 2 will share access to a 50-foot private way and easement for 486.58 feet running north from the Tenny Mountain Highway. All of parcels 1 and 2 are in the agricultural zone district. On sheet number 2, that's sheet number 1, if you want to put up sheet number 2. That has a lot more details for it. That's it. Okay, sheet number 2 depicts the entire parcel. Topographical showing us lots 1 and 2, and also outlines the shoreline protection zones, which are those three lines coming off from the river. The first one is 50 feet from the river, which is a very restrictive zone. In this zone, you can only remove so many trees. And it's break... When they look at it, and when you plan it with the DES, they make it cut up into 50-foot grids, starting on the east side and coming down. And you know, you can take so many trees off, which would be the trees that we're proposing in the walkway. And you can't take out the stumps. You can cut them flush, or you can grind them, but you can't remove them. And that's a very restrictive area. Nothing can be done in that area other than that. And you have a more restrictive area, which I believe is 75 feet from the top of the bank.
In our environmentally sensitive area, yes, within 500 feet of the Baker and the Penney.
And the next line you see following the river is 150 feet. Matter of fact, matter of fact, the bank of the river, the bottom line, is the reference line when you refer to everything. And that is 150... That line is 150 feet. That's less restrictive, that 150-foot area. You can cut the trees. You can take out the stump to a certain amount. But it's strictly governed by the DES as to what you're going to do with it. And the next area, the next line you see where the marker is, that's 250 feet from the river, which is the jurisdiction line for them. There's really no... From the 150 to the 250, there aren't a lot of regulations just so that... They know where there's jurisdiction in, and it's 250 feet. That's the mostly restrictive area. You can put buildings in both of those areas, but they're all subject to different engineering requirements. And it's sheet... That's sheet number 2. What else they show? The plan also depicts all of the following detail. We show the wetland is on there, 100-year flood location, soil types, proposed wells, leaching area, flood plain, and environmental sensitive zones. And that is about... There is all for that sheet.
Can you... What are the dotted lines on this sheet? Can you?
Can I go up and point on those? Are you referring to these lines?
Yep.
The contour lines?
No, no, not the contours, the black circle dots.
Okay, and that's in the legend. But that's the lines of soil distinction. They're on all the sheets after that.
All right, thank you.
And that's the different soil, and it's marked which ones they are. And they're on the right over where you show the members of the board, the different soils.
I see the soils data, but I didn't see the key there. Okay. That's okay.
Yeah, and it shows them... I think it spells out what it is on the lower one. Yeah, yeah, right up here. 100-year flood elevation, and over here it says approximate soil line type.
Okay, I see that. I see that.
It breaks up, and it shows you the number, and the number to the soil type.
Yep.
By the way, there's probably about a foot to a foot and a half alone for the entire site. And below that, it's... The leaching is excellent. It's 2 minutes per inch. We had the soil scientist while he was there. He's from Northwood, New Hampshire. He'd like this. And he did a PERC test in the two soil types that we'd be in, and he said they're all 2 minutes per inch. And he did the PERC test for two days, so that he could really get it saturated and check it. So you're going to get excellent leaching, especially for the roads and the driveways and any areas that we're going to put the stone instead of paving. Actually, when it's just going on a little bit, it's... When we're through in there, because of the larger areas like the roads and the parking lot and driveways that are all stone and leaching, you will have more capacity in the river than you had before. And when we do the drainage design and submit it to DES, they will go over that, too. They're going to be very interested in that. We have to be equal to or before construction with the runoff into the river, and it'll actually be minus.
Okay.
And if there are any questions up to this point, or do you want me to go on to lot number 2?
Yeah, let's handle the subdivision first. Go ahead. Lot 2?
You want me to go on with lot 2?
Sure.
Sheet 2?
Sure. Yes, please.
Okay. This is the narrative for lot number 2, the Golden Age Campsite, 19... Phase 1 Site Plan Review. Sheet 1 of the master plans.
So I apologize. Are you moving on to the site plan at this point?
Lot number 2, Golden Age.
Or did you want to?
Wait, will I get a sheet mixed up? Wait a minute. No, I should finish up with the... What's that? I'm missing a sheet. Let me close it on to that.
Are we still?
Well, I'll finish up with that sheet.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's for the subdivision, really.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned with the subdivision at this point.
I was jumping ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
So if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd like to answer them. I try to.
So, yeah, the initial topic at hand is the subdivision of the two lots. Does anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant at this time? Steve, go ahead.
Thanks, Phil. I guess my question goes back to the... I know there was paperwork in there that Mr. Carter has applied to DOT for a driveway permit. And the paperwork from DOT says for us to reach out if we have any kind of questions or concerns. I'm still a little concerned, long-term, for the town of Plymouth as far as the access being not lined up with the street across and not being far away from the street across either. It's just like at the worst location. Just kind of being just off from perpendicular to the other road. So I just want to flag that. It'd be great to know from the district engineer if it satisfies their needs. I guess we don't have to push it. I know we've talked to Mr. Carter about the fact that that would require some filling to have four-way intersection. Long-term, I think as a planning board, we have to at least explore that option. That's all I had.
Okay.
Should I answer that?
Go ahead, sure.
I've been before them on two reviews, and I gave them their choice of where they wanted it. And to go all the way back before they... In 1952, when they brought that road through, there was an existing entrance there, which is still there. And we're asking for an alteration of that widening. And I also mentioned that would they want it across from that? They said that would probably be the ideal situation for when you get the long-term traffic in the far future. But the big thing happens that it's about a 14-foot... To put it across from the other road is about a 14-foot drop. By the time you made your grades down that you called for, would be filling in all of that wetland that's being flooded from the river. And he didn't think there was any concern with it not being across from each other. He said it's close enough, and actually, the acceleration lane and deceleration lanes are not too far apart. And when you come for the deceleration lane coming from the city towards here, it's going to be down 150 feet. It's going to be beyond the entrance, really. He said he didn't have any concern, and he's only... It's been approved temporarily, subject to their approval of the two lots. And they wanted to specifically know what's going to happen to the two lots so they can make sure that the radius is big enough, and the openings are wide enough, and the rains are far enough down to handle the traffic flow. And he said, "This is really a minor flow." Then you don't have a very high flow of traffic on that road at that end. So they're satisfied and happy with it until they see this plan. They've seen the plan, but it's got to be approved before they'll give me my permit. And that would be the first permit that we will receive. The rest are going to be in DES. And there's about four different permits I need. And they all require to know what's going to happen with the whole site, because they interact with drainage, the wells, the septic systems. So that's, I hope, can answer your question. And it has been reviewed twice.
Does anyone else from the board have any questions for Mr. Carter before we consider the completeness of the application? No, hearing none. Would anyone care to motion to accept the application as complete?
I move we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the subdivision application as complete.
Who was that that seconded? Who was it?
It was me, Mark.
Mark, thank you. So, roll call vote on the motion to accept the application as complete. Carl?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And myself, I will vote aye as well. So the subdivision application has been accepted. Are there any... Considering we just had a hearing on this from the board, are there any considerations before we open the public hearing for the subdivision? For comments from the public? Hearing none. It being 6:50, I will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the subdivision of... Subdivision at hand? Any members of the public? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing within the same minute, I believe. It's 6:51. So how does the board want to handle this? Do we want to... Steve, do you want to table this until we have an opportunity to inquire of the DOT engineer?
I actually really appreciated Mr. Carter's response, and I think if it wasn't for the fact that there was that 14-foot drop-off, and when I zoomed into the subdivision, and you can see that wet area, which is part of the floodplain to the stream, if it wasn't for those environmental characteristics, I think it would be really worth pushing for. I wonder if we could just make it a condition of approval, Phil, that he get, you know, that he get his driveway permit from DOT? Because if they see any problems long-term, it sounds like he's had conversations with them, and they're okay with it. I think it will have to be addressed at some point in the future, but that may be decades from now, so.
Yeah. Jules, wasn't there an approval for the driveway in the application packet?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have the... In the submission. I don't see it here, but I think it was in...
In the Google Drive.
Yeah, that's where I thought I saw it.
I think it said pending.
Did it? Okay. But if it's pending subdivision of these two lots, that puts it on us.
Actually, it doesn't even say pending. It's just the application.
Okay, so it's been filed.
Yeah, but anyone can file an application, but it sounds like Mr. Carter has had conversations with them. And if it's a condition of approval, then it wouldn't get filed till he had his driveway permit, which is pretty typical.
All right. Would anyone care to move this subdivision application one way forward?
You have to be...
Sorry, I'm looking for a motion from the board. Do we want to table this, or do we want to move forward with approval of the application as filed?
I'll make a motion. We'll see if it flies. I would make a motion that we approve the subdivision as submitted with the condition that a DOT driveway permit be approved by the state.
I'll second that.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board have other concerns or any other issues that we should consider as conditional approvals? Hearing none. I will call the roll call. So Steve has... The motion on the floor is to approve the subdivision as proposed with the condition that a driveway permit be obtained from Hampshire DOT. Carl, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Mary Ann? Mark?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. So the subdivision of the two lots is approved with the condition that a driveway permit be issued or be obtained. Which brings us into, I believe, the next step would be that you'd like to address the site plan for the...
Site plan review, yes.
For the Golden Age campground?
Yes.
Lot number 2.
Yep.
Do you want me to go forward with the narrative?
Sure, if you'd like to introduce the narrative for the site plan review, I think that would be great.
Thank you. Sheet number 1 of the four, the master plan. This is a proposed master plan for lots 1 and 2. The topography and all of the items compiled from the topographic subdivision plan for the two lots. In addition to all of the above, the 50-foot easement becomes a private gravel roadway extending northerly 830 feet and ending in the cul-de-sac 150 feet from the river. All of the roadway is located 150 feet from the river, the river inside the SQWPA, which is the Shoreland Quality Protection Act. This zone is the least restricted zone. And if you want me to point that out, you can. That's what happens is... This is the 150-foot line. And that, the roadway, is all within that. Actually, it's all in it. And this is the maximum. This is the jurisdiction. This is the 150-foot line. It's the 50-foot line.
Okay. So I don't know if...
It's the least restrictive area.
For those of you who are online, the applicant was pointing out on the map where the 150-foot setback is, but I believe that Jules was able to kind of highlight that as he was showing us. So... All right?
The 19 RV lot sites that will be leased lots for six months duration, from May 20th to October 20th. It should be 100, less than 180 days. It will be serviced with onsite electricity, water, sewer, and cable TV. Lot number 2 also has a dedicated easement along lot number 1 to the town of Plymouth for a park, an area to park vehicles, and for access to the proposed Riverwalk. I know the plans.
Getting there. Sorry, I'm getting there.
Are there multiple pages to that drawing file?
Yeah, I can't see it from over here.
Yep, there you go.
There you go. That's the one you had, right?
One of them, yeah.
Is there another page if you keep going down? Oh, that's just two of two. Okay.
Yeah. This... Do you want me to continue? Okay. This plan also depicts lot number 1, Phase 2, with proposed eight units for buildings of Golden Age Quarter Stadium with topography, access roads, and parking. This site detail has to be shown for total site evaluation and permitting with the DES and the DOT and the Corps of Army Engineers. So that's why we show on sheet 2 everything. I think you want sheet 1.
Is this sheet 1?
I showed both of them. But we're talking about the campsite lots, but we have to show that to the DES and get... Because they interflow with each other. The drainage from above is coming into the campsite area and out to the river.
Okay.
And also, we have the well protection areas.
Yep.
Leaching areas. Sheet number 2 shows an enlargement of the lower portion from a 50-scale to 1-inch is 30 feet. That sheet you were on is a 30-scale, which is much larger. And to show more detail, sheet number 3 shows the upper half of the total site enlarged to 1-inch 30 feet also. Couldn't put it all on one sheet, so we separated it in two sheets. And there's a match line to show where they join. And there's a little more detail on that. This depicts the 19 RV sites in detail with approximate locations of site placement for RV and passenger vehicles. In the lower right corner of the plan, it enlarge typical RV site, lease lot number 17 equals 1-inch 10. It's how big that is, and it shows you the area that will be cleared for each site. And that's variable within the site, because it's going to be in the best placement of that lot. But basically, you'd be clearing probably 40 feet by 50 feet to get the two of them in there. Small portion of those leased lots. And those lots cannot be sold. It's part of the entire package. They're going to be leased, and there's no transit. It's going to be leased for six months. And if they want to leave them there, they'd have to buy... It's going to be anchored down, and they'd have to buy flood hazard insurance. Most of them would be taken out, I'm sure, because they'd have to pay for leaving that pack for insurance to leave them there. So they, and they, there's going to be a gate, it shows a gate, they can't get in. If they left their vehicle there for the winter, they can't get in because there'd be a gate across, and they can't get in for the winter, they have to come back at the beginning of the season again in May.
So what you're so if someone were to purchase flood insurance and choose to leave their vehicle over the winter, and they were to get notification that there was a a high-water event or a big storm coming, they wouldn't be able to get in to get their vehicle.
They're going to get in, there'd be a gate there, though, and that's why they'd have to buy the insurance. And let's say they get flooded. I don't think they'd buy, I don't think they would leave them there, because they're going to pay an additional fee of insurance. It could be as much as $25 on a thousand.
All right, I think that's something we'll have to look at, because I'm not sure that we have the approval to grant stays longer than 180 days.
They won't stay more than 180, they can't, they can't even get in. Instead of being the lease.
Okay.
They cannot occupy those vehicles any other time than from May till October.
All right, we may need to evaluate that then. Okay.
That's the idea, so they wouldn't be taxed. And they don't, they can't, and actually, it's for senior citizens too, there'll be no schoolchildren. You want me to go on with it?
Please.
Okay. Sheet number three shows the upper half of the total site enlarged to 1-inch 30 feet, so you got the entire site is enlarged on those sheets so that you can see great detail on them. All lots have a minimum of 40 feet of frontage and exceed 5,000 square feet. A service building is shown between lots 14 and 15. That is 24 by 40, one-story, which will have men and women's facilities, two washers and dry units, and a dumpster.
I would say the next one, still.
So you want me to point out where that is? Or they probably can't. You can see the little building up in the top left.
Can everybody online see the drawing that Juliette is sharing? Okay. So these are the RV lots as Mr. Carter was introducing, and if, can you scroll down to the bottom of the page? In the lower right corner, there's a 1 foot to 10, or 1-inch to 10-foot scale.
It's over there, yeah.
On the right. Hard to scroll, isn't it? There you go. That shows kind of a larger diagram of the RV parking area, so there's a longer lot for the RV to pull into, and then a shorter lot for the
It shows the clearing line. And all of them are forested with the exception of the first few on the right coming in along the road, and they'll be landscaped. It shows the tree line, see that heavy line that followed along the edge of the road, crossed the road? That's already open. The rest is heavily forested.
Do you want us to wait for you, Jules?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you want us to wait?
Oh, no, no.
You're doing fine.
All right, so.
Yeah, that's our fourth sheet.
Yeah, that third sheet is probably a good one. Please, go ahead, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, I'd say each site is in the forest area will be cleared to a minimum only enter the dimensions shown on that tip of the lot configuration, one of 17 lots, and that one you just referred to in the bottom right.
Yep.
Lots 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, and 9 that are not forested will be landscaped accordingly, they're an open area. Which is like, I was trying to describe, it crosses the road, it's open right there. All these sites are on the side of the highway and will have access to the river for weeding, kayaking, canoeing, and fishing via the footpath. Launch ramp in the northwest corner of the site. Northeast, excuse me. Yeah, that's, it shows that over the top right corner, you can't, it's cut off at the top there, yeah. See that little trail that goes down to the water? You want me to point that out, or?
Uh, I can see it, and I think
See that, it's way over the right, yep.
Right there.
Right down there, that's where it enters the water, that'd be a footpath only. And there'll be a small two-wheel dolly so they can bring them down, they don't have to carry them on their shoulder. But they could park at the end, into that lot or at the end of the cul-de-sac temporarily to get their vehicle, their boat down there. To continue on, unless there's some questions at this point.
Do any members of the board have any questions at this point? No, please go ahead.
This might, hopefully, this is a fair question. Do we have a sense how often that area floods?
I don't have any information, but I do know that at that point where the ramp is down, that's about seven feet above the river. And I can imagine in the spring, at some point, it would flood just in that area, that's the lowest area in the site. At some point, the bank is 17 feet higher than the river. So I can see the way, conceivably flood if the ice jammed up or something happened, but on a normal year, there would be no flooding there. I didn't see, we took some tests down there, we didn't see any silt on the, on top of the soil, it was loam and into the sand, and you'd see if there was flooding, there'd be some siltation on top of it, if it happened within a couple of years. Because it had no place to go except on top of the leaves and the top soil. So I don't believe it flooded a lot, and I don't know if, maybe in DES they might have some information, but I couldn't find any information as to how frequent it floods.
Mark, I think it's a valid question. You know, it certainly, it certainly is a floodplain and identified by the flood insurance maps as flood zone as well, but yeah.
Yeah, just curious if any longtime locals had a sense of this was an area that flooded regularly, or if it is not, and it sounds like based on the soil testing that maybe it's not.
Yeah.
Excuse me, the soil analysis was already, he walked the entire site and took probes and he couldn't find any siltation on top, that was one of the questions I asked him.
Okay.
There is an area that does flood, but it's from the Mill River up front, you know where that land is?
Yes.
That floods from the Mill River when it backs up, and it's very flat, and it comes into that area. And I think I showed it to you earlier where it would flood back too. And it's in that valley of the land we're leaving. That's it, yeah. What will happen is this is where it's at, it overflows into that wet area.
Yep.
And it can come downstream to this area. At this point, the soil, I mean, the slope is this way, breaks and it goes this way. If it gets up two feet higher than the normal flow, it comes over there and gets down into here, goes down into the river. Because that does flood. And if you see water, it's not coming from the river, it's coming from Baker River, it's coming from the Mill River.
Mill River, yeah, okay.
In that area, we're not proposing anything, it's going to stay in its natural state. And can I go on?
Please, yep.
Okay. The benefits to the town for this site are the Riverwalk and Park. No services to burden the town, it's all privately maintained, and it will stay in that ownership. No schoolchildren, no new residents, increased economy to the local businesses, and an increase in real estate tax. Right now, the tax is about $3,000, and I did some just preliminary analysis. And it would bring about $40,000 to the town every year, and there's no cost to the town, no increase in population, a year-round population. And it's just a win-win situation as far as tax goes. And it's not bringing any new residents in that area. Want to go on, or are there questions at this point?
Do any board members have questions? Steve, go ahead.
No, I guess I'm wondering if this is a preliminary site plan, because we typically would want to see the location of the landscaping on those parcels that was talked about. I don't know if you can see the location of the gate, and if the details of the seasonal use are documented. And then well, septic, signage, lighting, dumpsters, that type of stuff, so.
Right.
I didn't quite hear all of that, I haven't heard any. There's still being adjusted.
Steve, this is a site plan review application, so, you know, certainly all of those questions are valid, so I believe Steve was asking about landscaping, lighting, dumpsters, well and septic.
I said where the dumpster will go.
Is that on here?
Yeah, I said that building that's shown as a service building.
The service building will have a dumpster?
Service building will be the dumpster site, yeah, it'll be on the site, way down and back, and.
My reason for asking for these specifics to be shown in the site plan is because we're going to be hiring a new code enforcement person, and in the past, it's been really hard to do enforcement of site plans if it's not documented on the site plan.
All right.
So that's, yeah, we can ask for revision or clarification on that, then?
Because it sounds like Mr. Carter has the detail, and we're hearing it verbally.
Yes. There is, there is a proposed well on on lot one. I see a 4,000-foot area on lot one, and I see a 4,000-foot area on lot two. Do you plan to build the septic in those 4,000-foot areas, or do you have?
That's the option of the DES, whether they want, that would be probably the last resort, is to have it all run down to the lower area and pump it up into that area, that's the very highest area on the whole site.
Okay.
The other method that we could use, if they, something that they would approve, and I think is feasible, would be three of those motorhomes, our RVs, would be connected to a septic tank in a leaching area in that area that would be under the, and it's all stone there, those those areas where they're going to park are going to be excavated of the loam, and they're going to be stone, crushed stone in there, so they'll leach. So if you thought there'll be no, in the whole site, except for the roofs and the upper, and the condominiums, there'll be nothing that's impervious, everything will be pervious.
I'm not su, well.
That's why we were going to put stone in the parking area, and the RV area will be the stone, that outline you see that? That's going to be all crushed stone.
My understanding is that DES considers crushed stone to be impervious because it's so well-compacted, but that's beyond they'll clarify that if they feel that way.
I think DES has already clarified and said that it's accepted as pervious.
Okay. Anyway, Steve, did you, so we've got the outstanding question of dumpster location, and just want that clarified. What else is going to be in the service building? Can you clarify that for us?
I did, I think.
Is that in the terms or in the description?
Yeah, there's going to be men's and women's facilities, and showers, and two washers and dryers. They can wash and dry their clothes, most of those RVs don't, do not have those, they have bathroom facilities. But if they want to take showers, usually they're a very crowded shower, if you've ever been in one. The little bathroom, that's probably four by four, the biggest, it has the bathroom, it has the bathroom sink, and has a shower. And everything gets wet in there. It's usually something like they use on the, if they're on the road, and they just want to stop at a spot that doesn't have, they didn't turn in overnight facility place. So they would be, I would say most of them, and they use 60 gallons per site rather than 120 gallons per person, it's very low volume. 60 gallons per site is what the DES monitors it for.
Is there anywhere in the application and in the documents you submitted where you identify the use of that service building?
Yeah, that's right, I think I just read it.
I was trying to find it myself, I apologize if I'm
Not on the plan, it's in the narrative, let's see.
Yeah, page two of the narrative towards the bottom.
Oh, here it is, right here, the bottom of sheet number two.
Okay, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, all lots have a minimum of 40 foot frontage, exceed 5,000, and a service building is shown between lots 14 and 15, that has a 24 by 40, one-story, which will have men and women's facilities, two washers, and two dry units, and a dumpster.
Okay.
I haven't shown it, the dumpster, and I haven't shown the building in detail, other than the outline of it at this point.
Is there anybody on the board that would like to see an architectural detail for that building at this point? Do we want to request that as part of the site plan? Let's move on at this point.
I just want to make a remark on that one.
Yeah.
That I could go through all that, and the DES wouldn't approve the site.
Okay.
So it's going to be a moot point at this point.
Right.
Something that would come with the permitting, they're going to want that, and you will get a copy of everything that we submit to each board and to every one of those departments, including the Corps of Army Engineers. Sheet, can I go on to sheet number four, or are we still on?
Sure, please. Is that the road grades?
Yes, but this is the existing and proposed profile, and all the private gravel roadways, it's going to be gravel based with the six-inch stone on top of it. And that would be stripped, all the topsoil will be stripped in those roadways and parking areas and sites. So that it will lead through from the stone into the gravel, and I think you called for that 12-inch and the 6 inches of stone in your specifications for gravel roadway. So that's what we're trying to design too. And I've had the state approve that in other cases. Now, this is the existing proposed profile of all private gravel roadways within the total site. They tend to follow existing contours with, which minimize the disturbance of the natural site conditions. The scales are exaggerated to a 10-to-1 ratio, the horizontal scale being 1-inch to 30 feet, and the vertical 1-inch 3 feet, so you can see the exact differences. A surface sheet runoff will be mitigated by leaching stone swales on the roadside and the stone ditches. Any fill placed within the compensate will be compensated by excavation. Any increase in runoff will be abated by leaching and a detention pond. These methods will protect the Baker River from any increase in river flow. And I've mentioned before, I think in the beginning, that when that's true, according to that plan, and if it's approved by the state, you will have a lesser impact on the river than you had in its natural state now, because of all the leaching that's going in into the ground, it'll recharge the groundwater rather than going into the river. And based on all of this, all of the middles, I am expressly requesting a conditional approval subject to all local, state, and federal permits. This will permit me to proceed with the project for permitting only, in other words, I wouldn't be doing any construction, I wouldn't be doing, there's nothing, and I need these separated because of mortgage purposes, in other words, I don't want to tie up the whole piece as I do the first piece. If I show it, if one, they're going to say, okay, we'll take the mortgages, if something happened, they could take over everything.
Well, the subdivision is approved, so they're distinct lots at this point.
Yeah, distinct lots, but they'll be all in one ownership. And I could, then I could take mortgages if I have to on that section I'm working in. I guess that's it for that one.
So that is the site plan application. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Terms of submission documents, is there anything that anybody feels is missing according to our site plan regulations?
Well, actually, it was, Steven asked a question about showing landscape and lighting. Will we be getting something like that as well?
If it's not included now, my recommendation would be that we would ask for those details now before we accept the application as complete.
I would agree. So I just looked back in our site plan legs and in section B of plat requirements, it lays out everything dumpster location, lighting. It even talked about building elevation, just like a simple sketch of what the building will be and the treatment like you requested. So it's all right there from Mr. Carter. Just to get the additional level of detail, we would need to approve it. The sign location and type of sign, that type of stuff too.
Yeah, that, that's true. There's no sign. Are you proposing signage to go up by the highway? Are you proposing signage?
No, not at this point. We don't know what we're going to have and what we're going to get approved. I would submit a separate detail plan of the signage if we're going to, we're going to go through, through a permit to do any further really.
Well, if, if you decide to put a site, a sign up later, it means revisiting, refiling a new site plan. Whereas if you include it now, we can, we can approve it now.
Oh, can I just?
Could he possibly just fill out a sign permit?
Is that sufficient for modifying a site plan?
No, but I don't know what would stop him from filling out a sign permit.
Well, no, we could have the sign permit on file, but we'd also need it. I mean, that's typically something you see a location for on the, on the plan.
Just want a location and a size?
Yeah, I think.
Because I don't know what the wording would be. It's a bit, it's approved.
I, I think it's more about the location.
Okay, that'd be easy to do.
If you're proposing. So I think the other thing to in, include is if you're proposing any lighting for the site.
Nothing other than the streetlights that show downcast only. There won't be any lights that would shine out for the airport or any bother, but I only see a few streetlights.
Are you, are you proposing the streetlights?
Probably. I think you'd probably need a light at least, at least one by the, the gate and with the, with the service building in it. That's probably true. Other than that, I don't see why.
We'd want to see those on the plans. We, we'd want to see those, the, the location of those lights included as well.
That's not a big problem. No, I don't, I don't have.
Anything along the river walkway, Mr. Carter? Any lights there?
I didn't hear that one. I heard it, but I couldn't understand.
She asked if there, if you're proposing any lighting along the riverwalk.
No.
Okay.
No, that's going to stay in its natural state.
None proposed there, Marion.
And that riverwalk isn't just for the people that are there. It's for the public. If you people so desire, it's an easement to the town.
Right.
Unless you want a direct deed to it. That's how you do it, but it's probably easier. As a document to make it an easement. Doesn't matter to me. I can make it a direct deed or I can make it an easement.
So the, the site plan requirements, page seven, do require certain, certain details. So you know, the shape, height, location and use of existing and proposed structures located on the site and those within two hundred feet of the site. You know, so your, your proposed building would need some details there. Elevation view and, or, or sketch of all buildings indicating their dimensions and surface treatment. So yeah, it does appear there are some details. Are, are you proposing curbing along the roads?
No, this is gravel, stone road, stone road, with a swale on each side, stone also to accept the rail.
So can you clarify that, what are you planning on for septic service on the site?
It's, it's, I would be proposing it two ways to the state. And the first one would be three RV lots connected to a septic system, which would be probably a thousand gallon tank. I told fifteen hundred, that minimum now. Fifteen hundred gallon septic tank and then it would go into a leaching chambers, which are H twenty loading, which would be in, in one of those sites, you know, where you park. Those would be stone. And under that is the concrete chambers that are leaching chambers. They're about four feet wide, eight feet long. And they're upside down actually. I don't know if you ever saw them. And they're, they originally were named as admiration chambers. It holds a lot of waste, I mean not with liquid waste, which is the effluent after the settles out in the septic tank. That goes out and rather than pipe and stone that only holds a minimum amount of water, these will hold an eighteen inches of water effluent from the septic system, from the septic tank. And that gives it a lot, it gives it, where it's also rapidly leaching, it gives it that air which eats into the, they're not, very rarely, because the rug buildup or impervious service buildup in those leaching chambers. If they do, you can open them at one end and rake that soil off and replenish it. And that would be my first option. And if not, everything would be piped down to a pumping station at the lower end. No, it's not shown on that sheet. At the lower end where the cul-de-sac is, there would be a pumping station there, pumping it back up to that four hundred thousand square foot site up on the hill.
Okay.
That would be an expensive system. And it would, it would still be chambers. I like the chambers because it takes a, a larger load and I can just give you one that we did in a shopping center. We didn't do the original design and it failed after about five years. And it was a, a small mall. We put in the chambers, which were very new in that, at that time, they had just come out. And actually it worked so well that they let them increase the mall double size without increasing the system. They had monitored it for a year when they first came out and it was one of our first pilot. It's really a Cadillac system. Especially if you have good leaching.
Yeah.
And, and even if you don't, you have that overnight period where it's not being used and it's going at another round. You would find the system full and in the morning it's empty and it gets air.
Okay, so I, I think that I'm, I'm trying to identify on our, on our plat requirements, which elements are, are not present as, as currently. And, and I think I would like to point to item F and G dealing with the buildings. I, I think we have sidewalks and curb cuts and all those things. Location, type and nature of proposed exterior lighting, including, including direction and area of illumination, which is L. Section M, water, water mains and sewers. Section N, waste disposal systems. You've got your, is there, is there a proposed well for lot two or is there only one?
There's two of them.
Okay, I, I, I noticed the one on lot one.
For the condominium, it's up on the top of the hill.
Yep.
Into the pieces of the river.
I didn't see the well protection area for lot two.
They show a hundred and twenty-five foot well production because of the flow.
But that's for, that's lot one, isn't it? Please, please, yeah.
Where the wells are. Yeah, that's, there's one there and there's. Oh, this is on the subdivision.
Right, so the site plan. This is site plan. Anti, yeah. No.
So we probably should do that.
But, but we don't have, what we're trying to identify right now is, is what items are missing from the plan so that we have an accepted.
Right, okay. I'm just, okay.
Oh, is there supposed to be one there?
Yeah, this one's down here, yeah. Maybe on the log sheet it shows.
Okay, alright. So is the well that's down here, that's, even though it's on lot one, it's going to serve lots two?
That, that will be an easement.
Okay. So it sounds like.
The site was tested for a well for the whole three.
So the easement will need to be identified, the well easement will need to be identified for the site, site plan as well. That's, that's another. If, if the location of the well, item O, is not on the site, we would need easement documents for that wells.
Isn't it shown?
It's shown.
What do you, oh, you want a document?
My, my thinking is that if, if the, if the site plan shows the well off the site, the site plan should also include an easement for that well.
Well, after we drill the well, if we may drill and not get sufficient, oh, that might be the site, the well could, could be moved. That's just our thought at this point. And I met with the, the well company and he says, well, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
Right.
And I have a place on, in Rumney, on the lake and it's down five hundred feet to get water. And another one up there doesn't get water, not mine.
Right.
It, it can happen.
Understood, understood.
So they're, they're, those are just to show that we plan have plenty of room for two wells. But they may be moved. That's not cast in concrete.
Okay. What we're asking for the, the site plan to include though is, is the location of the well. And, and if it needs to change, we can revise the plan afterward. But for now, if you're proposing the well to be off the site, we will need an easement, at least draft easement language that would be filed.
That, that's okay. The, the question I had was, my next step would be to put the wells in. I'm not going to go any further. I know I'm going to get water and get good water. If you're not going to get it, there's no point going any further with the development.
Alright.
They, by the way, they turned down the site for this, for Plymouth, for the city. That was going to be, there was two test wells on there back in twenty-ten. That was done by an engineering firm in Ashland, which I spoke to and got their records. And they went great.
So the, there were test wells to determine if the, if the town of Plymouth would have wanted to.
Their water supply.
Okay.
And they did one on the next site, this way, the school site, was it a school now?
Yeah.
They did that one and they turned that one down. So all three sites were rejected.
They, they may have good water for what you're looking for, but maybe not for the municipal.
It has to be treated too.
Okay.
And they didn't want to treat that volume.
Yep, understood.
They got, they did get water, but the site was down by the river and it's shown on the plan. The test well, they're shown on the plan.
Yep, I saw those there, yes.
It's still there. And we'll probably see a little off in the, in the RV area.
Okay. I presume you're familiar with DES requirements for well abandonment?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm, I'm trying to run down our list and, and identify what other items we need to consider your site plan application at this point. And I'd say the other, section Q deals with location design and illumination of signs. We don't need the, the actual permit yet, but we do need the location, size and design.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Can I show the size, the location and it won't be illuminated?
If, yeah, if you're not, if you're not proposing to illuminate, that's fine.
Oh.
Do you have thoughts on that?
What I was asking was, to meet your requirements, can I show in detail the size of the sign, the location of the sign and that it will not be illuminated?
Yes.
Yes, I, I would assume.
It's going to be small.
Since you don't know.
The condominiums will be there too and I don't think they want a sign that's lit up blinking or lighted or whatever.
Understand, yeah. And then, uh, location and copies of existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions or covenants, covenants. So that's, I think this section dealing with your proposed lease agreements for the RV lots is important to have that, that that language available to us as well before we can consider this as.
Give you a typical lease agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have the soil survey signage. I'm, I'm running down under plat requirements number two. I'm going to review these and ask the board if we need. I believe we have the, the survey, we have the contours, we have the elevation. We, we will need the elevation in first, of the first floor of all, of the service building. Provision for expansion of sewer and water. We have the expansion there. That's the four thousand square foot area. The landscape plan describing the number, location, type and size of all existing and proposed landscaping and screening. Steve, where there's significant, significant existing natural vegetation, I, I would think that it would be cumbersome to clarify what's existing landscaping there. Should, would, would we just ask him to describe the proposed landscaping changes?
I think so. On the, on the open lots that here I already identified. And it could be more general, but it'll become an issue once we look at the next site plan anyway. So it'd be nice to know. I think a lot of what's under eight and nine, Mr. Carter, has to just look through and see what he can add for detail.
Okay.
Outside of this meeting. And one of those things, Phil, is a erosion control plan for during construction. Which we haven't talked about, but should be documented in the site plan.
True, true.
So I don't know if, if maybe outside of this meeting, if maybe Juliette could help, Mr. Carter, kind of just go through that. I think the clarity you're giving probably helps, but there are quite a few issues.
And could I get a list of everything that you're asking for?
That's, yeah, I'm trying to go through it now so that we can have it in our minutes.
I can get a copy and incorporate it into a document or on the plan.
Yep.
And just one other little thing, if I may, just make sure you measure the measurements of the building and make sure it's
Located on the, on the site.
Seventy-five feet.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's still possible, it's still on the floodplain, so that would be up to the board, how much floodproofing they want as well.
That's a good question, yeah.
According to, I've looked at the floodplain management handbook and it says that guidance was, buildings over five hundred dollars in value or that had any kind of safety hazard, like people using the building should be floodproof to some degree.
That, that building would have to be floodproof and have to be raised so that the water can pass through and open. That, that's in, in the FEMA regulation and are also in your zoning book.
Yes.
So those are some of the elements that you might want to include in your building description in detail. You know, the, the, the floodproof design elements that, that.
The building inspector can't approve it unless it has all that, states right in there.
True, but are.
I will put it in the document.
Sure, but the site plan asks for those as well because the building inspector will call back on what we approve as well.
I think we're getting dangerously close to site planning. Where we should be accepting or, or not accepting the application as complete. Seems like it's not complete.
No, my, my, my initial, my assumption is that we don't have enough information to accept this as complete unless the, unless the board feels that we do.
Yeah, that's what it seems like.
It, it, so is there any, any member of the board that feels like we have enough information to accept this as complete at this time? No, okay. So yeah, my, my goal here is, is to try and identify as many of the elements that we'd like to see here as we need so that we can, Mr. Carter can come back.
I can back at the next scheduled meeting.
Probably in a month, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, December seventeenth.
We would, yeah, we would continue this to our next hearing, which would be December seventeenth. So we have an application. It hasn't been accepted, but we, we are looking forward to working with you on this.
Thank you.
So my recommendation would be, we, we've, we've kind of identified some of the, uh, design elements that we'd like to be included on the site plan. And Juliette, do you feel like you have enough information to communicate with Mr. Carter on, on the elements that we need?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I mean.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll need to vote, I think.
Well, we need to continue.
Well, you'll have.
We, we haven't accepted it, so it's not, um.
Yeah, yeah, I think you'll have to vote not to accept it, though, if I'm correct.
Okay.
To not accept it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can they accept the subject to these being submitted? It seem like all minor items are.
If we do that, I believe it binds us to a time schedule that is not under our control. My, my recommendation, my, I'm not comfortable accepting it, but, um, I, I would like to ask for a vote, a vote of the board either to accept or to, to deny acceptance of this at this time.
I'd make a motion that we deny acceptance of the site plan application and ask Mr. Carter to come back in December.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carl, thank you, Steve, all those in favor of, um, not accepting the application as complete at this time, but to provide guidance to Mr. Carter so that we can consider it again in December, signify by saying aye. Carl?
Aye.
Eve?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And Phil, I will vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question off the record?
Sure.
If I come back at the next meeting with everything that you asked for and it's satisfactory, can there be voter on it that meeting so I can go on to the DES?
I, I, I can't commit the board to anything. I, if, if the application is complete and the board is comfortable with it, we can consider it.
You could put up for a vote.
Yes, we can consider it.
I'd just like to continue on with the wells, and I don't get as long with the wells.
I understand.
Till I get something.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, I appreciate you.
And, and I'm glad that we, uh, were able to at least get your subdivision approved.
Thank you.
We're making steps here.
Okay.
As a start.
Thank you.
I, I guess the, the other question I would have is, I've tried a lot of different concepts and I was very comfortable with this one and I thought it benefited the town the most. Is there anything that you don't like about the concept? I mean, just the concept, and, and this is off the record, I'm not. I've tried, I've tried the driving range, and that's not going to work out. And I tried the miniature golf, it just nothing's going to work out, and I, and everything seemed a bird in the town and they weren't getting a lot from it.
Yeah.
I thought this was the best news.
My personal opinion is that, you know, I, I, I think there's, as, as I drive by the lot and, and kind of try to see back past through, through the trees, I, I think, I, I do think there's potential for it to be a successful campsite. Um, and, and, you know, having the, the potential for the, the condos on lot one, could be some, it could be, you know, either, I don't know if you're planning to do over 50 housing by RSA statute, or if you're planning to, uh, look for workforce, you know, classify it as workforce housing, but either way, I think it will.
I was thinking of retirees.
Yeah.
You're going to have a golden age, we're saying, and that's what I'm shooting for, so that there wouldn't be any bird in the town.
Well.
And it, actually, if you put a house there with two or three children in it, it costs you three times what you get in taxes.
E, e, even the, uh, New Hampshire RSA that, that specifies, uh, there is, there is over 50 housing, uh, defined in statute, and it doesn't prohibit families from living there, it just requires that one of the family members is over 50. So it, it can, it can be an extended family with a grandparent, with children.
If they agree to it in a sale, that, that can't be binding, that they, that they just stay.
Good question. It, it can be intended to have over 50, but, you know, I, I'm not sure what would happen if a family purchased it and then their elderly, uh, grandparent moved on or along the way, I'm not sure how that works, so that's, uh, I think it can be intended that way, but, you know, if, if you're not proposing that, I don't, I think it's kind of beyond the scope of the discussion.
Well, I was thinking that we'd also add it into the homeowners association. There, if you remember the association, that can, that can be the only consideration is that, that you're in the 50, the occupants are over 50. Anyway, we'll see what happens.
Sure, sure.
Well, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Enter the board, thank you very much.
All right, I am going to move on. All right, next item on the agenda is, um, the site plan review for Peppercorns, which is 55 Main Street? Is that correct, Jules?
Um, it is actually 57.
Is it 57?
But if you look on our tax maps, it's 55, so we're working to correct it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is Mr. Covert here to represent the application? How are you? Uh, good, your, your mic's a little, it's, it's a little hard to hear you, I'm wondering, uh, is there anything covering your mic, are you, are you?
It'd be perfectly honest, the first time I've ever done this, so I'm not really sure.
That just got better. When you got closer, it got better. Let's see if we can turn up the volume. Let's see. Can, can the members of the board that are online here?
Oh.
We can't hear.
We can't hear. Can you call in with your telephone? We're not getting anything.
The, the audio is not, well, we're, we're having a hard time hearing.
I can call in what number when I call.
Actually, that, that was better. No?
Can you hear it, Andrew? Try again.
You can barely, you can't hear it, it's not loud enough.
Do you have the number?
Um, the number's on that email, the phone, the call in, the dial-in number. Um, it's, it's actually.
We, we can wait, there's, don't, don't feel rushed here.
I was going to say, sometimes near the volume control on your computer, there's also a microphone volume control.
How about that, is that any good?
Still, still a little rough. Andrew, can you hear?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty rough, you can't hear really here.
So the, the issue is that this is a, a public hearing, and, and if the public can't understand what you're saying, we would be in violation of the right to know.
I've got the phone number here. 410. Do you need the phone, if the phone number, it will work, it's 410-339-7912. And then press pound.
Press pound?
Yep. We can, we can actually call.
You may have to mute yourself once you call in, otherwise you may get feedback here, but. Would, would we see the call come in somewhere?
Yeah, it would pop up there.
How about now?
That's better, actually. It's, well, Andrew, can you hear?
It's still not great. You give him the meeting ID to call in, he's got to call him the phone number first.
Oh, okay, uh, I, I can just call him, actually, I'll put him on speaker here.
That's fine.
What, what's your phone number there, Hal?
Uh, 603-348-2343.
It's not going through?
Hmm.
All right, let me just try again. What was that again? Still three, three, four? Go ahead.
Oh, yep, I got it now. Hello?
Okay. Okay, hang on a second, I'll put you on hold. Okay, go ahead. Much better.
I can.
You'll have to, um.
Mute his computer.
Yep.
Andrew, can you mute his computer?
Okay, that's good.
It says, um.
That's better.
Muted by the host.
Well, it was, it, we were getting both and we were getting feedback. All right, so we have a application for site plan review for, um, the applicant is Ms., is Harold Covert of, of Piermont, uh, for, uh, Peppercorns. Would you like to run us through your proposal and describe to us what you're doing? And you're, maybe run through your narrative and, and.
Yep, back in, uh, so, of course, Alex bought, Alex Ray bought the building back in, um.
He's going to turn his computer.
Oh, maybe mute your computer or turn your volume down?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, back in January. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah, we can hear you, but I think if you're, you're going to get feedback on your phone if you have the volume up too.
Okay. How about now?
We're good.
Okay, so, back in January, Alex Ray bought the, the Peppercorn building at 43 Main Street. I had come to town looking for a place to open a farm market. And I found the, a great place at 57 Main Street and was just hoping to move in there. Um, at the same time, Cindy Williams, the owner of Peppercorn, offered Peppercorn for sale. And things got kind of confusing at that point. So, after a few months of discussion, I finally ended up buying the Peppercorn business from Cindy Williams. So.
Yeah, he has to turn off the speakers.
At that point, um. You know, we were both faced with, you know, buying the business and then moving it at the same time. But of course, a lot had happened with the virus and Alex's determination to get us out of, out of 43 Main Street kind of diminished. And he allowed us to stay. So I'm a farmer by trade, more or less, and the summer kind of got occupied with trying to keep the farm alive during the whole virus stage, so we just kind of tabled everything. There was a building permit on 57 Main Street, uh, that was put up by James Bessard for interior alterations, and we just assumed that we could go forward with that. And then, as things got waylaid, the building permit ran out and rediscovered that we would have to go through this process of a site plan review to finish the alterations and move Peppercorn from 43 Main Street to 57 Main Street. So that is why I am here tonight.
Okay, thank you. And, and just to clarify, the, um, 57 Main Street is the former location of True Colors Print Shop?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just for those, those, I'm trying to get a mental image. So your, your application, um, proposes minor interior alterations, uh, including energy efficiency lighting, or energy efficient lighting, updated refrigeration, uh, painting, putting in a bathroom, uh, where there is none, and incorporation of the kitchen area necessar, necessary to run the store. And let's skip through the business plan, if you don't mind. We have the abutters list and notifications to abutters. And we have, uh, looks like some architectural sketches of, um, expanded space, but, uh, like an entry area, store layout, some food service areas. So does, uh, the, does everyone on the board have access to the site plan application from Peppercorn? Okay, great. We have a great deal of interior information, which would probably be sufficient for a building permit. It seems that we're missing a lot of the, the area, the, the areas, um, or the criteria on our checklist for a site plan, or for the, for the, um, plat requirements. How would the board like to proceed on this application?
Phil, um, we've had a couple of these come in the last couple of years, uh, when 1766 came in for theirs. It was very similar, all the, all the modifications were interior. And so a lot of the stuff that we just talked to Mr. Carter about didn't apply downtown for really just a change of use on the in, interior. That's one of the reasons we're trying to get this minor site plan so that applicants, um, such as Hal, don't have to go through kind of the same level of rigmarole for a change of use. So to me, the application looked fine, it's basically a minor site plan, but I don't know if others feel differently.
That, that was the kind of discussion I was hoping to, to foster, so does anyone else? Mark, Carl, Mary Ann, do you feel strongly one way or another about, the requiring additional detail for the outside of the building, where there are no proposed changes? Or Hal, can I just clarify that you're not proposing any exterior changes or, or changes to parking other than, you know, minor lighting, that type of stuff?
Yeah, no, we're not changing, we're not proposing any changes at all to the outside of the building.
Okay. So, go ahead.
It's, it's like a, a clear case of, there's, again, change of use, not anything major. I don't have any problem with it.
Right, I, I think procedurally, um, from my perspective, the site plan review standards are, are created by the planning board, for the planning board, and as such, I think we have wide berth to enforce or waive these regulations, whereas, um, some of the elements in the previous site plan we were looking at are required by the zoning ordinance, and we really don't have sufficient authority to waive those without, uh, without further, with, without requiring those on a new plan, so I would feel comfortable if, uh, a member of the board was willing to move this forward at this point, so, uh, it, might I suggest that we consider this for acceptance at this point?
Make a motion, we mark this as, uh, this application approval, acceptable.
Are you clar, let me clarify, are, are we moving to accept the application as complete?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's fine, is there a second? Thank you. Um, all those in favor of accepting the Peppercorn site plan application as complete? Carl?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And Phil, I will, I will vote aye as well. We do need to have a public hearing here, so it is eight o'clock, I will open the floor to the public. Would anyone from the public, either in person or on the phone, care to speak to the site plan application at hand? Anyone from the public, please raise, raise your hand or unmute yourself and can, feel free to speak up. I don't see anybody on the list anyway. Looks like everybody on the list, there's nobody from the public on the list, so, um.
There's no one here, so.
If being 8:01, I will close the public hearing and ask the board how we, uh, choose to, uh, handle, do we move this forward as a, for an approval at this point?
Steve is nodding.
Steve, I know you want to say it. Steve, I know you want to say it.
I was gonna let somebody else give it.
I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve here.
All right, I don't want to hold, I don't want to hold up the applicant, um, I'd make a motion to approve the site plan as filed.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Carl. Is there any, uh, any discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, Carl?
Aye.
Eve? You're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And Phil, I will vote aye as well, uh, so, thank you, Hal. I hope this gives you everything you need to move forward with your building permit, and good luck with the business.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you have any other questions for the board?
Nope, I look forward to the building permit and we can get going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, back to our agenda, is there anything else? In the minutes? That brings us to adjournment, would anyone care to discuss anything else on, uh, tonight's, tonight's meeting? All right, somebody's gonna have to step up, who's gonna move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Carl, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn are non-debatable, all those in favor, Carl?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary Ann? You can say no.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain, I, I'm good, I'm gonna abstain.
It's still a vote, you have the right to abstain, I will vote no. So we have abstain, one no and three ayes, the motion is, the, the move to adjourn is approved.